This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Good evening. Welcome to our April Board of Select meeting. I'm Mike Frida, North Haven's first selectman. Joined, as always, by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. Welcome to the April meeting. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is a flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two, any public comments on tonight's agenda? All right, we'll move to item number three, approval of the minutes of the Board of Select meeting of March 3rd.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 3rd, 2022 meeting.
I'll second Sally's motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number four, there will be no slides, ladies and gentlemen, from me tonight. There's really two things that I'd like to talk about, and then we'll get back to more of an economic development updates at the next meeting or even the meeting after. So... And this is a question to both Bill and Sally. I'd like to get your opinion. Today, I was at a statewide mayor's meeting, and we had a lot of discussion about the Ukraine. And a lot of us were talking about organizing some kind of an event to help the poor people in Ukraine. And the question I wanted to ask you, Bill and Sally, we can do this one of two ways. I can organize an event in town and publicize it with the public to do a drop-off. A drop-off of items that those poor people in Ukraine need. And there's a list of items. There's a list of specific items that are needed. I can engage the CERT team. The fire chief and I have spoken about this already. CERT would be willing to be there and accept the items donated. And then we would create a repository here, and then I'd have either Public Works or the Fire Department drop the items off to St. Michael's Church, which is a Ukraine church in New Haven. That's one approach. Some of the other mayors I spoke with today, logistically, aren't able to do what I just suggested is a possibility. And some of them are putting on their website these sites that their citizens can donate money. And the money, it's been verified, goes directly to the people in Ukraine. It goes to a site, to the country, and then it gets disseminated. So I wanted to get your opinion, what option do you think is the better? We can do it one of those two ways. So Sally, I'll start with you. What do you think?
I like the items better. Why couldn't we do both? If people didn't have items or didn't want to donate items, they can have the option of donating money as well. Assuming what you're saying is true. That's what you always worry about when you donate money, is where's it going? But, yeah, what was your sense at the mayor's meeting? I know you've said that people are supportive of this, but, yeah, I think we should do both.
Okay.
Might be an easy way out.
Okay. I was thinking along the same lines, but does St. Michael's take contributions as well? We could still do everything through them if they'll take cash contributions.
Well, the dialogue at today's statewide mayor's meeting, not in reference to the church in New Haven, but there's a question, you know, you want to make sure the cash or the donations get to the right spot. And at least in our case, with the church being in New Haven, it is a church that is collecting these items and ensuring that it gets delivered to the right locations where people need these items.
Yeah, but they might be able to buy more items of, you know, they, based on the donations that they get, they may be short or, you know, short certain items. You know, a contribution in dollars might be helpful.
Would you be a supporter of doing the dual approach, Bill? Maybe we do it both ways, like Sally's suggesting?
I think so. I think, you know, because some people, yeah, I mean, the other issue always is in terms of collecting all this, sometimes you collect a lot of, sometimes I know from other disaster exercises, people collect a lot of certain things and not enough of others. You know, which is why, you know, a lot of the other international organizations that support like disaster relief and everything sometimes actually like to receive, you know, money in cash because then they can equalize what they need. And plus you have the logistics of getting it from New Haven to Europe and then the Ukraine.
All right, so I think it's good feedback. We'll look to try to accomplish both. Sally?
Well, from our perspective, we have a collection point here. We just have to get it to St. Michael's. They must be part of a much larger...
They are.
...web of transporting it across the way. So, but the monetary contribution mechanism is online, you said?
There's a site that was brought up to us today. I'll have to get the actual site, but it's an online donation site where people can just donate.
So I think we could provide that site soon, put it on our website, and then also do the collection, put the list of items that are in need, and do both.
All right. All right, that's good. That's what I need to know, okay?
Have you talked to somebody at St. Michael's or...?
Not yet, no. I want to get your opinion on this.
Yeah, again, they might, you know, they may also take a cash donation, you know, where we could give that to them and they could further buy items that they need.
All right, Val, so we'll work it out. We know we have our fire chief and CERT willing to help out with this. Good feedback. We'll probably do a dual approach, okay? And the only other thing I wanted to mention, I'm going to turn it over to Valerie. Val, let's talk a little bit about Earth Day and what's happening with that. Fran Natar, our friend, has asked us to speak about this, and it's a good event. Val?
Yes. Once again, the Conservation Commission will be sponsoring an Earth Day event on Saturday, April 9th, from 9:00 to 12:00. It'll be outside of the North Haven High School, and they do have a portico there, so it'll be either rain or shine. So it doesn't matter the weather. They will be there. They are featuring a place called Hope with their rescued raptors, Where the Love Is, showing rescue dogs for adoption, goats, bees, the North Haven Junior Garden Club, the North Haven Girl Scouts, Public Works, and they'll have giveaways. The North Haven Fire Department will be there, and the CERT organization will also be there. They have totes and seed packets that they will be distributing to those who attend. And they're also having a shredding truck on site, and that will be there from 9:00 to 12:00. And for a fee of $10 per box or bag, you can bring your shredding. So additionally, they're also having a townwide cleanup, and that will kick off at 9:00. And they'll be doing North Haven parks, fields, trails, and public areas that they've identified for volunteers who wish to partake in that. So you can stop by the high school to pick up gloves and bags and help to clean up our town. And they've got several groups that have already signed up. The North Haven High School Key Club, the Leos, the Interact Club, North Haven Garden Club, the Trail Association, Peters Rock, and Girl Scouts. So we really appreciate all those that have already taken an interest, and we hope that everyone will find some time on Saturday to partake in these activities.
Okay. Thanks very much, Val. So I'd like to turn the meeting over to Sally Buemi. She's asked to put some items on the agenda. So Sally, it's your portion of the agenda. Go right ahead.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate you putting all of my requested discussion items on the agenda. With the first one, I, when I first saw the agenda with all of the material in here regarding the... ...fertile housing, is that... I thought that Attorney Coppola was going to be here.
I believe she is. She's just not here yet.
Yep.
Okay.
So would you want to switch the order?
Can I skip item one and I'll go, because I, discussion of supernumerary orders is something that I mentioned briefly during the public hearing the other night. And again, when I thought that Attorney Coppola would be here, I said, oh, let me add it on.
Yeah, just switch the order.
Okay, so I'll talk about discussion of the analysis of the 2021 operations. And this is regarding, Michael, you might recall at the last Board of Finance meeting, which was March 15th, during public comments, I had asked some questions about the summary that the auditor, Mr. Santafanti, had given, and that comparing it to your executive summary that you had given about the closing out the 2021 fiscal year. And so you had given me this document. Maybe you could pass one on to Bill. And, you know, obviously, it's quite a complex document, so I really didn't have time as you handed it to me at the Board of Finance meeting. So that's, and it's entitled Analysis of 2021 Operations, so that's why I named it. That's why the agenda is worded the way it is. So I had some questions about this, because I really didn't have a chance to study it and ask you about it. It wasn't, I know it was provided to the Board of Finance members, but it wasn't in the packet that I had received in preparation for that meeting. So I just had some questions about it. You know, the bottom line, which was the net increase to the general fund that's reported here, 215,642, was the same number that you emphasized when you were giving your executive summary in February. You had given this document. It had the same bottom line. But when you were discussing your executive summary in February, you said that we would be getting to this net change or surplus of, you know, you rounded it up to 216,000. And you gave four explanations. You said 500,000 of MERSA would go into the general fund. And these are my notes from, written really quickly as you were talking. And you talked about project transfers, 400,000, which is on here. A 60-day window for taxes received after the fiscal year came in of about 139, and that's here. And then this GAAP accounting mechanism, which I assume is this 1,320,217, near the bottom, right? So the half million for MERSA made sense to me, because, as you know, and I have all of our year-end reports from the past 10 years here, and as you know, we review the year-end reports in August, at the August Board of Finance meeting. And the MERSA money, and the, MERSA, which was 1.8 million this last fiscal year, is a revenue line item, but in our year-end report, we, for years, we've reported it as zero. And instead, we've applied MERSA money in the expenditure side to items that it's intended, which is usually in streets and roads. So we have these large negative numbers in the final expenditure report. And even though we receive every year the MERSA money, we report it as zero. So what I, what the expenditure report for 2021 did have 753,256 as the net underspent, which is reflected in the very top of this operations analysis that I, you know, that you gave me and that I gave you back. But that has the MERSA application in it. And the revenue report always tells us that, we always report it as zero received, but the late Ed Swinkowski would always tell us how much of the MERSA was applied to the expenditure side. And it was 1,317,210. So that application of MERSA got us to the expenditure budget being underspent, 753,257. So in February, when you said that we would be using 500,000 of MERSA to go to the general fund, that made sense to me, because we received the 1.8 and we applied 1.3. So, you know, that made sense. But when you look at this original, the original document, the one I just gave you, it's called municipal grants and aid, but it's the exact dollar amount. That's the MERSA amount. 1,860,380. The entire amount was reported. And so, in my opinion, 1.3 million of MERSA money is counted twice in this document. It's in the 753,257, and the full amount is reported in the revenue. And I watched the August 18th Board of Finance meeting. That's the meeting where we always, the Board of Finance always reviews these year-end report, or initial year-end reports, in quite detail. And at minute 29, Mr. Hallahan, a member of the Board of Finance, initiated a discussion with Mr. Swinkowski about the 753,000 underspent. And at minute, 30 minutes and 46 seconds, Mr. Hallahan asked, and I quote, "The 753, which is the under-budget total, does that require an adjustment for MERSA?" Mr. Swinkowski's answer was, "No, the 753 already includes the MERSA money coming out. It's been taken out of the expenditures." And I even brought my computer here if you want to hear him say that. So I am very confident that it's been done like this for years, that that 753,257, which is at the top of your document, has the MERSA money, or at least 1.3 of it, in it. And so what I did, and I just wanted to show these to you and Bill, is I did two alternate calculations using the same format of this document. And I just wanted to have you look at them. Here's one and two for you, and one and two for Bill, please. And again, you have to look at these two calculations and compare them with the original, the one that you gave me. So looking at the first one, it says at the top, Sally's calculation number one. What I did was, of course, I kept the same amount under revenue, the 2,905,297. But instead of reporting the 753,257 under expended, what I did was I subtracted out the 1.3 million. It's actually 1,317,210 from that figure, and you got a negative 563,953. And then I just continued the math straight through. I kept the MERSA in at 1,1860,380, and it came to the bottom line, a deficit of 1,105,568. And the math is correct going down and going across. I checked it so many times. I have my calculator here if you want to check my math. And then number two is where I kept it at the underspent of 753,257. But I only put in 543,170, which is what I thought was, based on what you said in February, which is what I thought the amount was going to be. And then I followed the math straight through according to Mr. Santafanti's report here, and I got the exact same amount, 1,101,568. So I believe that you have to do either my calculation number one, which is to take out the, if you're going to report all of the MERSA, you have to take it out of the expenditure. That's number one. Or if you're not going to report all the MERSA and just put what was left over, then you can keep it at the 753,257. You could do one or the other. But what the problem is, I have with the document that you presented, is that it does both. It reports the underspent at 753,000, which Mr. Swinkowski told us that takes into account 1.3 million of MERSA being applied to the expenditure budget, getting it down to that amount. Or, so if you report that, you have to reduce the municipal grant. But in this original, your document, you're doing both. You're reporting the full amount of the grant, the 1.8 million, and you're reporting the 753, which takes into account 1.3 million of the 1.8. So what am I missing? What am I, what am I missing if this document is correct? What am I not getting?
Did you factor in the encumbrances that the auditor found that were charged as expenses that weren't spent?
Which ones? On this sheet? I kept everything exactly the same.
So there's 1,300-plus thousand dollars of encumbrances that we had as expenditures that the auditor found we didn't spend?
Yes, it's down here. I kept that in there, the GAAP. Yep. I didn't touch, the only numbers that I changed, if you look at, for example, if you look at calculation number one, all I did was I changed the 753 underspent number to a loss, because I subtracted out the 1.3 million of MERSA. And I kept the municipal grant at 1.86. You know, I didn't touch it. So if you do the math, that's what it comes down to. The one, if you look down below, the budgetary, the main difference is in that budgetary operation number. On your sheet, it's a negative 546,857. After you balance out revenues and expenditures, it was a negative 546,857. On my two calculations, it was a negative 1,864,67. And then I applied the encumbrance that you're talking about. I actually absolutely gave credit to it. So that brought that negative 1.864 down to just 543,850. I added it to that BOE contingency fund, and it, you know, it came out to the negative 1,101,568. The difference between my number and your 215,642 is exactly the 1,317,210 that Mr. Swinkowski told us was applied on the expenditure budget to get it underspent to 753,257.
So folks, you might not know what any of this is about, so let me explain what this is about.
And I can only talk to Mr. Frida in public, so I'm sorry to bore you guys with all this, but I have no other way of discussing these matters with the first selectman than in person at a public meeting.
So what this is about is, since Ed Swinkowski passed away in January, yours truly now is the Director of Finance, in addition to being the first selectman, in addition to being the Economic Development Director. So I was forecasting a deficit in terms of our fiscal year, in terms of revenue, COVID-related back taxes we hadn't collected. So I ended up, to Sally's point earlier, presented a draft summary, a draft of where we thought we were going to end the fiscal year. Between the February meeting and the March meeting, the outside auditors, certified public accountants, who have about 40 municipalities across the state, between the February meeting and the March meeting, we had further discussions on taking the draft summary and bringing it into a final product, which was presented by the auditor, Joe Santafani, here on March 15th, I think it was.
Yes.
So during, between February and March, I said to Joe, "I'm willing to use federal funds," because I have that clear through the federal government, "to balance the budget and offset revenue." He put this mapping sheet together for me. He told me that we didn't need to do that. So he said that he discovered 1,300-plus thousand dollars in encumbrances that the town hadn't spent that were booked as expenses. So the auditor certified the 215,000 dollar surplus as a certified public accountant audit. I then had to submit it to the federal government. The federal government reviewed it and accepted it. So I appreciate the analysis. The GAAP accounting is such that you have to take aggregate revenues and aggregate expenses, and I had to rely on Joe to take me through that this was the way to do it. So I think that whether we debated it or not is almost irrelevant.
Okay.
It's submitted and it's been accepted.
Right. I did not touch that GAAP encumbrance of 1,320,217. I included it just as the auditor included it. And your executive summary in February came up with a net change in fund balance of 215,642. This document in March, what does it say? 215,642. So I'm not sure what changed between February and March, because the fund balance is exactly the same from your executive summary in February to here. Mr. Santafanti has said on several occasions, every year when he comes in, he says, "I don't do anything with your, the Finance Department's internal reporting." He's just external. He started this document with two of our internal numbers. It says, "Amount per Board of Finance previously provided reports." And that was these year-end reports that were presented back in August. And the numbers are exact, the 2,905,297 revenue shortfall and the underspent 753,257. The only number I changed, because the full amount of MERSA was in here, was that expenditure amount. Because that has 1.3 million of MERSA money in it. So how could you have 753 in expenditure and 1.86 under MERSA as revenue? You're counting 1.3 million, not the 1,320,217. That's a different, unfortunately, it's the same, similar. 1,320,217 is similar to 1,317,210. They're not related at all. 1,317,210 is the amount of money Mr. Swinkowski told us last year that we used from MERSA and applied to the expenditure report right here to get down to 753,257. And he said, and again, I quote, "The 753 already takes MERSA out." So is Mr. Santafanti, when he was provided with these reports, because those were his two starting points, was he aware that MERSA money is in that 753 underspent amount?
Yes.
Okay, well, I would love to have permission to talk to him about it.
I'll ask him, okay? Whatever that conversation ends up, the audit's not going to change.
No, I know. I'm asking, again, you provided me with this at the final moment. When I was standing at the microphone, I appreciated it very much. I looked at it, I'm like, oh, I got to study this, you know? And then I had to compare it to your executive summary. It had the same, they have the same exact bottom lines, but the organization of the numbers is very different, but it has the same bottom line. So I needed time to study it, which I did between February 15th, excuse me, March 15th. excuse me, March fifteenth, when you gave me this, and tonight. And I, I just don't understand how, uh, when you said in February, we're going to apply five hundred thousand in MRSA to the general fund, that made sense to me. Because that is the difference between one point eight that we received and the one point three that was applied to the expenditure side of the budget. So it didn't bother me that seven fifty-three was in there. But then when I saw that it wasn't five hundred and forty-eight thousand, I'm like, uh-oh, what, what happened to what Mike said about five hundred thousand? Um, and that, it just doesn't make sense. I am not an accountant, but I know how to add and subtract. And it didn't make sense. So if you could check with him so that I could have the opportunity to ask him that question, how he could have that number and that number on the same document, then, then maybe I'll get the answer that I'm looking for. Or the understanding, not the answer, the understanding that I'm looking for. Because right now I do not understand this.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll ask.
That's fair enough. Okay. So I noticed that, um, I appreciate that.
But Mike, ultimately, the, these numbers were, you know, were, again, if I understood you correctly, did you say they were more of a preliminary nature or?
No, no, no.
No, that's the problem.
Which one of you, which numbers, or, you know, because Sally's redoing them.
Right.
We did issue the CAFRA.
Yeah, so the CAFRA was, yeah, so the, the report that, this is Sally's analysis of a report that Joe Santafani and I finalized, submitted to the federal government as the final audit.
Which is this one here? Is that the, that is the final one?
That's the final one, right. That is on the books statewide and federally as the town's close of the fiscal year. So Sally's come up with some other analysis, but.
Well, but just changing, well, Bill, when you see the, you were on the Board of Finance?
Right.
When you see the expenditure report and you see all those negative numbers in Streets and Roads, you know that that's the application of the MRSA money. And, um, you know, again, when Mr. Hallahan asked about the seven fifty-three, Ed said, the seven hundred and fifty-three thousand already includes MRSA money. And Mr. Donahue immediately said, yes, the negative numbers on the expenditure report reflect the application of MRSA money, unquote. And that was Mr. Donahue, Donahy, excuse me. Um, a, a man who I have the greatest respect for. I had the privilege of serving with him on the Board of Selectmen for four years. He confirmed that those negative numbers reflect the application of MRSA. And those negative numbers of MRSA got us to that underspent number of seven fifty-three. So what is your explanation, Bill? What is your understanding of that number?
I'd have to go back and look at my notes from the meeting number one.
Okay.
And then number two, look at this in conjunction with the CAFRA.
All right. Well, I'm just.
I think, you know, it's, you know, we did get a, we did get the CAFRA issued. And I was just looking at that in conjunction with, with, with you gave us plus what Mike gave us.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think it takes, you know, I mean, and if both, I would think this, if this was the, this was what was accepted by the town's, you know, auditor in terms of doing, doing the CAFRA and everything, that, I think it fairly, it barely reflects what is in the CAFRA.
Mm-hmm. Well, um, I, you know, the, that night, March fifteenth, when you handed this to me, you were sitting here, I was at the microphone. It was really near the end of public comment, and I don't even know if he was still here.
I think he left.
Yeah, and, and I, you know, honestly, I, I had so many other papers, I wish there was a podium there for people who have public comment. And, and, and so when you handed it to me, I really didn't have a chance to look at it and notice the one point eight. I expected it to be, as I said, five hundred. And I think he was gone anyway. So again, I just want to have a better understanding of how these two numbers can coexist on the same document.
Okay.
That's all.
All right.
So, um, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we'll go, um.
I'll give you a chance to look at it as well.
Please, thank you.
You know, including the two, the two, um, calculations that you did.
Yes. It's just another way of, of looking at the same, uh, numbers. I didn't do anything with that gap number. I, I, I calculated it and according to the formula of the document.
Do you want to get Jennifer now on the next one?
Yes, because I'm, I'm happy that the town attorney is here. My first item, um, the discussion item was the supernumerary ordinance. And let me just quickly explain how this came about. When I was preparing for the April fifth public hearing, a couple of nights ago, I was reviewing all of the new positions that are in the budget. There are thirteen new positions. And I was reviewing all of the, um, supporting documentation that the various, um, department heads present to the Board of Finance in support of their, um, requests for personnel. And so when I was reviewing the, um, Police Department, um, supernumerary, um, request, or, or, I shouldn't say supern, uh, his request for more staff, you know, which was three new patrolmen and, and another supernumerary. Um, it's not a school resource officer. We go through this all the time. Uh, the high school currently has, if I read this correctly, one supernumerary and one SRO, which is a school resource officer, which is a, um, full-time officer. Supernumeraries, folks, are retired officers. They don't get benefits. They only work, tell me if I'm saying anything wrong, Michael. Um, uh, they, they, they only work when school's in session. They were, um, the supernumerary ordinance authorized their hiring back in, um, June, um, of, um, June twenty-fifth of two thousand and eighteen. We had a very well-attended town meeting. And, um, so as I was thinking about his request for the supernumerary, I looked back at the ordinance and the town meeting itself. And I wanted to give you, uh, this is our, um, the agenda for our special meeting where we called that town meeting, and these are the minutes from the town meeting. So I, I wanted to give you and Bill a copy of each.
Thank you.
Do you have this? Can I give you, Councilor, a copy? You, you were there. You, 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 you worked very hard on this ordinance, and you and I discussed this ordinance, um, on the phone a few times, did we not? So, um, one of the things that I noticed, um, and again, I supported the supernumerary program, especially after, um, certain provisions of the original, um, ordinance were removed. They were duties that were kind of disciplinary in nature. Uh, you might recall, um, John Lambert got up and, um, and, and made a motion to remove four specific, um, duties. And they were actually the four exact ones that I had objected to when we discussed it at the June fourteenth, Special Board of Selectmen meeting, when we were presented the ordinance and voted to call the meeting. Um, so the problem that I, I, one of the issues, the legal issue that I have, and I, I numbered the pages at the top of the minutes, Attorney Capola of the special town meeting. Page four, it has item five, which was the resolution that was, um, presented and voted on and passed. It says to consider and vote upon the recommendations of the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen to appropriate two hundred and twenty thousand for the North Haven Police Public School Security Supernumerary Program to protect the health, safety, and welfare of students enrolled at the elementary schools and middle school in the town of North Haven. And that was seconded and passed by unanimously, it looks like. It says via voice vote. Um, so my question is, this is procedural only, um, you know? Now, we have a supernumerary at the high school. Are we in violation of our ordinance because of the wording of this resolution?
So, um, I, I did, Val had told me that you had a question. So I just printed out the ordinance. I didn't know.
Yeah, I have it here too.
But, um, I'll. So I don't think that you are, only because the, or, now that I know what your question is. I don't, I don't think that you are because as I look at the ordinance itself, it does not limit the program to the elementary school and the middle school. So I do think that it's fine.
In one sixty-three dash one, it says at the public schools.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
But, um, the call by the Board of Selectmen had that same language about elementary school and middle school. And the motion limited it. The, the agenda that was noticed beforehand, the motion that was passed.
But the ordinance would have been posted as well. And I think that what that was the result of, probably, and I'm sorry, I just, it's going back some time now.
Yeah, I know.
And I'm so focused on affordable housing and cannabis and all the stuff I'm doing right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, um, I think that that's because that was the intention at that point, was to fund the supernumerary for those schools and not for the high school.
Yeah.
I'm sure that's what it was.
The two twenty was for five supernumeraries, one for each of the four elementaries. But the fact that the, it's referenced this way with the ordinance reference, um, and it specifically mentions just those schools, you, you, you don't have a problem with it?
I don't have any concern.
Do you see the merits of my question, though? Because.
Well, I think you're questioning whether at that time there was a limitation placed upon the ordinance to only those schools. But that's not what's stated in the ordinance language itself. And I think that the ordinance language itself is what controls. I think that that, that additional description was made because that was the intention of the placement at that time. I don't think it, it forestalls you from placing somebody at the high school.
You don't think that the wording of the resolution was meant in any restrictive way?
No, I think it was, again, meant to go to the allocation as opposed to the ordinance language itself. I mean, the ordinance language would have been posted in advance as well, and it does not contain that limitation to those schools. So I don't have any concern about there being any violation of the ordinance by the placement at the high school at all, no.
Okay. The, the other reason why I, you know what this reminded me of? Couple of years ago, we changed our ordinance on the threshold for bidding. And that went to the Board of Finance first. And they voted to change the, um, the, the threshold, uh, to increase the threshold for bidding. And at the time, um, Board of Finance member, Mrs. Barrett, or the following meeting, said, wait a minute, we were given some wrong information when we had our discussion. And so the Board of Fin, but Board of Finance had to redo their motion, and the, um, town meeting had to be changed. Poor Val was struggling to get it in before the end of September, I remember, because it has to be in September. Um, uh, with, uh, you know, and I'm thinking, okay, that, that had to all be redone because of incorrect information. And so that made me, that came into my head when I read this with its restriction to elementary and middle school, and would that require us to change the ordinance now that we have them in the high school? So you, you see what I'm saying? There was a couple of things going on in my head legally that.
You just wanted to confirm.
Yeah.
You're being cautious about it.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I, again, there's no concern here because as I read that language, again, there's an, it's, it's going to the appropriation itself and the placement. It's not going to restricting the ordinance just to those schools. The ordinance language is very clear that it is encompassing of all public schools.
Okay, yeah. I, I noticed that. I noticed that too, but thinking about that threshold problem, I thought, ugh.
You just wanted to check.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I'm completely comfortable with it. I think it's fine to place at the high school as well.
I appreciate you understanding the merits of the question. And I, uh, respect your legal analysis. You're the town attorney. I'm not.
The ordinance language would control.
Okay.
That's fine.
Um, and so that's, takes care of that one. So what else? What's next on my agenda here? Discussion of, oh, this we can do quickly. Uh, there was a newspaper article about the budget, which I was very happy to see. I, I wish there was more coverage in the local papers of the budgetary process. Um, uh, so I was happy to see an article. But, um, I just wanted to clarify because it says in here, Mr. Frida said the stimulus, federal stimulus money, this is not a quote of yours. Mr. Frida said the federal stimulus money North Haven received amounted to more than a million dollars, and that that money is approved by the federal government for acquiring capital expenses. I, I think that has to be clarified. We received a lot more than a million, but we are using one point, almost one point one million in the budget that was presented at the, at the public hearing for, um, targeted, eleven targeted, uh, capital items. So you'll agree that we did, we actually received three point five million in.
Yeah, so.
You know, I, I think that's misleading there.
Yeah, I mean, the content of this story, as the reporter's interviewing me, we're talking about what we're spending on capital. I was, I said, we receive federal dollars of which a million is gonna, or so is gonna go towards, um, these capital projects. But it appears like we only got a million and we're getting, um, seven million, um, uh, seven million, eight thousand.
Right. So when I read that, I'm like, oh, finally, there's an article about it, and it's, it's wrong. So I want, I think it's important for people to understand that we didn't get a million dollars in American Rescue Plan money. We got seven million. Um, also, it says that the grand list grew by two point nine million. No, it grew by ninety-four point five million, generating, um, two point nine million in additional taxes. So that's another mistake. I, I, you know, I'm always so happy to see articles, but then I'm like, oh, no, that's wrong. So I want people to know the right information. Um, next, um, I wanted to discuss the, um, additional lieutenant in mid-fiscal year in the fire department. Actually, we could do sort of this one and the next one together because they sign, sort of go together. Um, let me get my budget books out. I was at the, uh, most recent fire department, a fire commission meeting, and it was explained that, um, one of our firefighters returned probably, I, I don't know, within the last few months perhaps, from military duty. We're certainly glad that he's back and thank him for his service first and foremost. Um, but he is serving as, as a fifth lieutenant right now. And our, our current budget is only budgeted for four. And on page forty-two of our budget book. And he is getting, the, the chief confirmed this with me. He is getting the increase in pay. Lieutenants get about seven thousand more than firefighters. It is my opinion that any mid-fiscal year change in the employment table, especially one that requires more money, needs to be approved by the Board of Finance. And that is, um, you know, I had that letter years ago written by, um, Bob Seula of, uh, then Tyler Cooper and Alcorn. He was the, uh, town attorney for many years in Republican administrations. Uh, I worked with Bob. He's probably one of the more esteemed experts in municipal law. Uh, right out of law school, I went to, uh, continuing legal education at Yale Law School. And I decided to take a course in municipal law and was thrilled that there was Bob Seula as the instructor. So I have great respect for his expertise in municipal law. And, uh, you know, he says things in this, um, long letter. There was an attempt to promote, um, police officers, uh, years ago, um, in mid-fiscal year. And he says, without the approval of the Board of Finance in accordance with section seven oh seven of our charter, there is no authority for the creation of a fourth lieutenant's position. That's what they were trying to do. And the payment of the increased monies, which would be incurred by having an additional lieutenant on the payroll. So, um, again, I, I, I welcome this fire, the firefighter back, and I'm glad he's back and safely back. Um, but I, I believe. But I, I believe um, that according to our, our charter, the Board of Finance has to approve that. As much as we're happy he's here and he's entitled to the lieutenant position, that doesn't mean we don't have to follow our charter. So I, I think that, that need, needs um, Board of Finance approval. And my other, I, I don't know if the town council wants to comment on that, have you?
I think though, we should add some additional perspective.
Sure.
This firefighter happens to be a Navy SEAL. And uh, he is very good at being a Navy SEAL. So he's like one of the top four Navy SEALs in terms of testing, physically, emotionally, psychologically, mentally. He was deployed, which left, left us a gap in lieutenant's position. Now, we thought he was gonna be out for eighteen months. And with what's called U.SERA, which is a federal government law, that you have to take the people back at the position that they were in. We were managing that aspect also. On the operational side, we were short a lieutenant, so we elevated a, a guy to a lieutenant. And then when we brought the Navy SEAL back as a lieutenant, I believe he, he, I have to look back in the records, but I think he was one of the two firefighters that were adding that year in a transition up to the budget.
I think it's this, this year, yeah, he just came on, yeah.
So, so we replaced, uh, instead of hiring three, it was, instead of hiring two plus one.
Yeah, it's just one.
Just one.
Yeah. So I understand that.
So now, um, with uh, with respect to the five lieutenants versus the four, um, we would anticipate one of the captains retiring um, in the maybe nearer for foreseeable future, which would mean that one lieutenant would get promoted to the captain, we'd be back at four. That is kind of the justification for it, so we'll.
Again, I'm not challenging the, the compliance with the federal law, I'm just thinking that, and again, I, I have, I am sure, I, I just think that we should be following our own um, procedure as, as well. And, and that leads me, you know, to the fifth comment was um, you're, you're, I understand what you're saying, that there might be a retirement soon of, of a captain, so we would be back to four. But then we'd have to get another firefighter, because to keep it at forty. Yeah, but anyway, um, this is the page forty-two, which is the same you know, employment table for the fire department in the proposed twenty-two, twenty-three Board of Finance book. And it does have, under lieutenants, it has five. And usually when there's an increase, you have the previous years in parentheses first. And then, like, like here, it has the firefighter, the old one, and then the new one. So, you know, I don't understand why it doesn't say four and then going to five, it just has five. Whereas in the current year, which is, you know, we, we now have five, um, it only gives four. But um, again, if, 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 if the Board of Finance approves it, I have no problem with it. I just think they have to approve it. And it is listed, even despite your anticipation of a captain retiring, this book does have five lieutenants in it and then just um, uh, thirty-three firefighters, because this one is hiring two more firefighters. So we're going uh, from thirty-three plus nine would bring it to forty-two. So I was a little confused about it just having the five, because historically, we always report the old amount and then the new amount. And this one just has it, lieutenants five, it's not showing it as a change. And it is a change from the, because here you have two columns, the previous year and then the current proposal. It should say four to five, um, so I just wanted to point that out. The possible uh, um, the possible resignation or, um, retiring, I should say, not resignation. The possible retiring of a captain notwithstanding, it should still be reported accurately. And my final thing I wanted to talk to you about is the retention of the triple A rating. I was surprised at the March fifteenth Board of Finance meeting about how much reliance was put on that in the budgetary um, formulation process. I certainly understand and, and um, I've always commended you for our triple A. And I understand the importance of having a triple A um, rating. But um, the fact that it's just of such a high importance is, it makes me think that there's a lot of major bonding in the future. I mean, we, we're still paying off the high school, we have the middle school, which pretty much is just in its early stages. As you mentioned, you don't start, you mentioned the other night, you don't start paying on, on bonding till it's complete and then it's another seventeen to twenty years. We have the fourteen million dollar project that included the nine million for the firehouses. There was also a lot of um, paving and the, and the big huge uh, um, building that was put up, storage facility on Elm Street in Public Works. So that was another fourteen million, we have the police, which was twenty-five million. You know, is, I understand the concern, but i- if we were to lose the triple A, I, I know it would be a big jolt to your ego and I understand that and respect that. But it doesn't, what, there's a lot of subcategories of the rating system. We're not gonna go from triple A down to B, I mean, there's so many subcategories. And the rating, it, you know, we're already set on all of these huge projects, we have those low rates. Nothing can change that. And we refunded lots of our bond just a couple of years ago, getting the benefit of very low rate. And I just wanted, you know, uh, wanna know why uh, this particular year, there was such a, an incredible amount of discussion about the importance of retaining the triple A rating um, at that March fifteenth Board of Finance meeting, which actually led to, in my opinion, Mr. Monaco, the chairman stating that he thinks we need a mill rate increase. Because you were saying the bonding folks like.
Yeah.
Mill rate, like tax increases. Can you explain, um, in my opinion, maybe I'm misreading it, but I don't ever remember the retention of the triple A being that integrally related to every bit of discussion of the Board of Finance March um, budget formulation meeting?
Well, I, I think, you know, I was trying to let everyone know that things are changing. And things are changing all across the country. Things are changing that municipal governments are going into default. Things are changing that there are municipalities losing triple A rated status, we retained it. And I wanted to let everyone know what the dilemma is. And the dilemma is, for those that don't even know what we're talking about here, the dilemma is this. The rating agencies rerated as triple A rated, it's the gold star of financial rating. I handled the rating calls, God rest his soul, Ed was with me, but he's, was a secondary uh, person in the rating calls. But he was very valuable to me. So I wanted to let everyone know that what they were telling me was, Mr. Frida, we got a couple of red flags here. We think the management and leadership in the town of North Haven is outstanding. In fact, out of thirty or thirty-five to forty triple A rated municipalities, North Haven scores among the highest in the peer group on leadership and management. North Haven scores among the highest in the peer group on economic development. But North Haven scores lower in the peer group, among the lowest on your fund balance status, which is eight point two three percent. We wanna see it at ten, twelve, fourteen percent. And North Haven scores lower in the peer group because the rating agencies in these times, believe it or not, we wanna see small tax increases every year, a quarter of a mil, a third a mil. Because that guarantees the financial stability of the community with revenue coming in. They actually came out and said to me, Mr. Frida, when you're no longer there, what's gonna happen to the economic development? So what I was reporting was real-time information as to what's happening and what's changed. Now, I stood at the meeting the other night and said, despite the threat of losing it, despite the threat of losing it, I am not gonna raise the mill rate this year. And I presented a no mill rate increase, because I recognize people are struggling. I talked about inflation, gas, food, everything is going up. So I wanted to let everyone know what was happening, so that, consider this. I didn't say anything about it, and all of a sudden we lose a triple A rated status. People are gonna say, Mr. Frida, what happened? That's why I spent a lot of time on it. Because one of the things I've learned years ago in this profession is sometimes when you deliver one message, only a fraction of the population may be listening to it. So I find I have to repeat some things over and over and over again, so I know that everyone understands it. Now, in some of the public comment the other night, you would have thought I was raising the mill rate. People were talking about, you know, well, North Haven could become the new, I don't wanna mention the municipality. You know, uh, the, the triple A rating, you know, is, doesn't mean anything, that's, that's the gist of what was said. I gotta be honest with you, that's not the right thing to say. North Haven is not gonna become the next municipality, I won't mention the name. So that's why I spent a lot of time on it, Sally.
Right.
I have to let people know what's happening here, and that's why I said it.
Okay. I was very pleased to hear your comments Tuesday night, and I acknowledge that during my comments of your dedication to the no, um, no mill rate increase. But I had to submit my, um, you know, talk about real time, I had to submit my discussion items. I usually do it on Monday of every, whenever I do, to give Val plenty of time to incorporate them in. And so I put this in on Monday bef- before you spoke. And I primarily put it in, in response to the discussion, some of which I found disturbing at the Board of Finance meeting. With Mr. Monaco's emphasis on, we, we, you know, we, we really need a point four seven mill rate increase. He said it several times, um, you know, in, in relation to retaining the triple A rating. So, you know, that's why I put this in here. But your comments and your dedication to keeping it at a zero, a, a, a no mill rate came later, after I submitted this. But I was still a little shocked, I, I never heard so much discussion at a budget meeting of, that that was the goal, rather than trying to forecast revenue, trying to forecast expenditures, talking about um, cutting expenditures or adjusting revenue. Those are normal budgetary um, discussions that happen in formulating the budget. Not, you know, we've gotta keep the triple A rating, uh, you know. So that's, that's the reason why I put it in here.
You asked me a question earlier.
Sure.
And you asked about bonding, okay?
Yeah.
So I don't anticipate any major bonding projects other than paving. And um, we have to improve some of our athletic facilities. And so I would not anticipate major bonding. But the way it works, folks, is, and I understand that um, sometimes I get a lot of questions, people don't understand what goes on, because I'm the guy in the mound every day. Visualize North Haven as Yankee Stadium, I'm on the mound, I'm pitching, I'm catching, I'm playing center field. So I'm in the action every day. And what that means is that I see things that others don't, because they're not inside the stadium. They're up in the stands watching, but I'm actually on the playing field. So the way the triple A rated status works is that for every bonding you do, whether it's sixty-nine million dollars that we did for the middle school, or two million dollars for paving, it doesn't matter, you're gonna get rerated every bond issuance that you ask for. So I know that I'm gonna have to uh, go for two million dollars to pave, I've made commitments to pave again this year. So that, and this ties into your question, Sally. So knowing that was coming, I wanted to let everyone know we're vulnerable now. Because even if it was ten dollars I was bonding, I, that triggers a rerating, and that's why I, I spent a lot of time on it.
We've been doing um, two million a year bonding for paving pretty regularly. I, I was wondering if we were gonna skip a year because oil is so high, but you're, you're gonna go forward. Your plan is to go forward.
Well, I, I've made commitments to people.
Yeah.
And um, so I can't, I can't go back on the.
With two million, with oil, what is it now, one thirty? I, I don't know. You know, and you, you know that, that um, the, the paving is, is, is related to the price of oil. You know, two million usually gets us about.
Ten to eleven.
Oh, I was gonna say eight to ten miles, so ten to eleven, say ten, ten miles.
Ten miles.
But at, at the rate of oil is now, you know.
Well.
That's, that's why I was just wondering if we were gonna skip. Or I think we've done this before where we skipped like a half season in.
That's kinda what we're doing now.
Yeah.
So, so the reason why, we're not, the reason we're not doing it in the spring is two reasons. Primarily, and this is something else people don't realize, when we pave roads, we don't pave the roads. It's an outside contractor, TILCON does it. But the preparation to pave the roads means that the Public Works Department has to go out and redo all the catch basins and ensure that the drainage is, is stable enough to handle a new road. What that means is, we don't have all these resources here, folks. What that means is, all those public works fields, uh, guys who are doing that in a spring paving program, they're not prepping the ball fields, they're not prepping the soccer fields. And then, rightfully so, as the leagues start opening up, the fields are in terrible shape and we can't have that here in North Haven. That's, I, that's reason number one. Reason number two is that I had hoped that the oil markets would subside later in the year, which means that the cost per barrel potentially could go down. Uh, and then it would be, we'd get more roads to pave for two miles. But our plan is to start paving sometime in August.
Oh, okay.
Complete all of it by, by the end of September, early October.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Right.
Yeah, I, I understand that relation with Public Works, I, I, I fully supported the additional labor in the um, Public Works uh, budget request. Yeah, I did. Okay, thank you.
I just had another comment since.
I'm done.
In terms of the um, you know, the sheet, which I don't remember seeing, the sheet that was just handed out.
That was just passed to the Board of Finance members.
Yeah, that's why I didn't have a chance to actually analyze it. And, you know, I was listening, and, and to be honest, I was listening to, you know, Sally, Ed, a number of other, you know, comments that I think were, you know, were important. I think that with the help of Jennifer and your comments, Mike, I think that you've answered. And this first, and I was able to at least, you know, the official financial report, and I was able to follow some of the numbers through the report. Um, and I'd have to look at Sally's changes, but the official um, financial report, approved by auditors and also by the state of Connecticut, clearly shows that we had a net change in fund balance uh, for the year of two hundred and fifteen thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars, just as you said. And this is, is the official document. Now, how we got to that number, maybe you think it, we should have got to that number differently, but the number still is gonna be two hundred and fifteen thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars
Right.
of an increase in the fund balance.
Right.
So I, I think, you know, you're, I think it would make some sense, I think as, Mike is, you know, you've asked for maybe to sit with, you know, maybe sit down and actually get more detail for Sally in terms of how that occurred based on Sally's changes, which did not come up with the same number. But I can see where, I can see where, you know, we have a two hundred and fifteen thousand six hundred and forty-two dollar net change and positive change in the fund balance. And those numbers match up to a lot of these numbers that are on the sheet that I was just giving tonight from you, Mike.
Well, as I mentioned, Sally, I'll call the auditor and see.
Yeah, I just wanna ask him that question. How he could have the seven fifty-three and the one point eight six on the same um, ledger, if you will, that's all.
All right, one final point of this, Sanifani, Joe Sanifani, discovered one million three hundred plus thousand dollars in expenditures that he added back to us, okay, gave it back to us. So, because we didn't spend it, so.
I have that in there, yeah.
So we'll, we'll, I'll give him a call.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Um, yeah, I just wondered if, if Attorney Capola agrees with me that if the, if we hire, if we change the employment table in mid fiscal year and pay with a promotion more money. we change the employment table in mid-fiscal year and pay with a promotion more money, should the Board of Finance approve it? Per 707 of the charter?
So, I have to say this to you. This letter's from 1993.
Yeah, our charter hasn't changed since then.
It cites various statutes and, and other documents that I've never laid eyes on.
All right.
I don't, I can't answer that question. And I don't know that I'm the appropriate counsel for the town to answer that question. You do have Labor Counsel.
Yep.
And I think it is more appropriately to be answered by Attorney Brian.
Yeah, I mean, Labor Counsel felt that the strength of the federal law, U.S., almost required us and mandated us to do it, so.
Right. Well, yeah, that is from 93, but the charter has not changed since 81, and the statute that Attorney Seul references has also not changed, so.
That, that may be true.
Yeah.
I noted too, and that it said the Board of Finance and/or the town meeting.
Depending upon the amount. If the amount is over 20,000, then it has to go to a town meeting. This is less than that, so.
I mean, I, I just, I can't.
He's saying at the bear.
Given the nature of, of the question.
Yeah.
I mean, I can't look at a letter.
Okay.
In a matter of a couple of minutes and give you a response that I agree or disagree. And of course, I hold Attorney Seul in high regard.
Yes.
Of course, but.
Yes, I, I remember when I was in high school, he was on the Board of Ed, I believe.
Yes, he was.
Yes, so, he was at my graduation, too.
Oh. All right.
Here we go, we can continue with item six.
All right, so, Bill, would you like to start?
Sure. Item number six tonight is appointments and resignations. Resignation of Sandra Mastro Ianni, 183 Sentinel Hill Road, from the Commission on Aging, term to expire December 31, 2022.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Sandra, for your service.
I will make a motion to accept the resignation of E. Richard Wilson, 45 Summer Lane, from the Planning and Zoning Commission, full seat, term to expire November 30, 2023.
I'll second that, Rich Wilson's resignation.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. All I'm going to say about this, ladies and gentlemen, is please keep Mr. Wilson in your prayers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next.
Next item is resignation of Paul J. Wyman, 24 Kimberly Circle, from the Planning and Zoning Commission, as an alternate term to expire November 30, 2025.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Essentially, ladies and gentlemen, we flipped the seats. Mr. Wilson's going to an alternate, and Mr. Wyman from an alternate to a regular. Okay, next.
I'll make a motion for the appointment of Dean Vellane, 16 Salateris, to the Library Board of Directors to fill the unexpired term of Paul Colello, expiring on December 31, 2022.
I'll second that appointment.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I'd like to thank Dean for stepping up. Dean sat on this Board of Finance for many years, and thank you, Dean, for willing to do this. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As Mike mentioned, I'll make a motion for the appointment of Paul J. Wyman, 24 Kimberly Circle, to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill the unexpired term. E. Richard Wilson terminating on November 30, 2023.
Second.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion for the appointment of E. Richard Wilson, 45 Summer Lane, to the Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate to fill the unexpired term of Paul J. Wyman, expiring on November 30, 2025.
Second.
I'll second that.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, next. Item seven, update and recommendation from Affordable Housing Plan Advisory Committee.
So, I am here on behalf of the Affordable Housing Plan Advisory Committee, just to provide you with a very, very brief update. The committee has probably met, we do have a committee member here in the audience, Bill Richards, he's been a great committee member, I do want to acknowledge him as well. The committee, I believe, has met about a dozen times at this point, and has, has been educating itself on affordable housing. They've engaged members of the North Haven community with various professional experience in housing matters in that, again, quest to learn as much as they could about the topic. They did just receive from the SCROG and the consultant that was hired by the SCROG, RKG Associates, a draft affordable housing plan. I did hand that out to you, to each of you, a copy to each of you, as well as a list that was prepared by OPM. They're keeping a list as, and it's being updated regularly, as affordable housing plans are submitted from municipalities across the state. They are recording it, and that is available online. So, that gives you a sense of the municipalities that have submitted their plans thus far. With the submission, or the distribution to the committee of the draft plan last week, this was the first copy of the draft plan that was received. So, obviously, when I initially appeared in front of you, I explained to you that the statute provides that you may hold a public hearing. I did recommend that the board hold a public hearing on the draft plan, once it was endorsed by the committee and put before you for your consideration and adoption. The statute does require that you notice that public hearing 35 days out. Given that timetable, there's no way that this is going to get done by June 1st. That's the reason why I am making the recommendation that you authorize the first-electman to send a letter to OPM indicating that they will not have the town's plan by June 1st, and providing the reasons for that. Two of them being the fact that this draft plan was just received. It, it needs, you know, the committee has spent a lot of time on this. They want to thoroughly review it. There, you know, really, they only saw the demographic and affordability gap analysis and, and the survey results. So, there are other aspects of the plan that they have to closely review. And they did, I, I do want to point out, in terms of the strategies, the 13-member municipalities who are using the consultant, two are not, two members of the COG are not, Branford and Bethany, they have their own consultant, they're doing their own plan. There was a list, a 10-page list of strategies that was distributed, and they had to go through and select the, the strategies that they thought would work for North Haven. But, I, I mean, you know, it's, it's a process. And, you know, this, again, this is the first complete document that they have received, just having received it last Wednesday night. They have not yet met again to even talk about the initial draft and the changes that they would like to see. So, you know, we will be having meetings as the month goes on, and then probably into, into May, and be, be able to present it. I would think probably by your June meeting, we would be ready to present it to you, a revised draft.
So, by when?
I think probably by your June meeting, we would be able to do that. But, then, of course, you know, you're going to want to review it and, and notice the public hearing, and again, it has to be 35 days out that it's posted with the town clerk with, on your website as well. And then, if you have any changes coming out of the public hearing that you want made, you know, you're going to have to direct those changes following the public hearing, and there has to be a period of time to make that happen and bring it back to you to vote on the adoption of it. So, it's just, it's just not realistic that it would be done by June 1st. It's not giving it the attention that it deserves, especially after all the time that this 10-member committee has taken with, with this very important issue thus far, so.
Well, I, I think I could speak on behalf of the board and thank the 10 members for their service thus far. I know they're working very hard. Now, we, we have to do a resolution here, and not only asking for an extension, but a, designating a date of submission to it. So, with all of the outlining that you've just done and the public hearing and the 35 days, what, what submission date are you considering?
So, I think it would be safest to, to tell them that it will be submitted by September 1st. That seems most appropriate, with the hope that it will be submitted, obviously, before then. But, we, you know, we have to see, I think, how the process plays out.
Right.
I don't, I, I just, what I'm concerned about is overcommitting. April's a very busy time of year for folks with the holidays as well. So, you know, we want to give the committee enough time with this, so.
Right.
I, at this point, my recommendation is September 1st.
Yeah, lots of folks have vacation plans in the summer. It's tough to get anything done in the summer.
Which, which is why.
But you still feel.
Which is why I think that, again, that gives us a little bit of an additional.
Wiggle room, okay.
You know, 30 days, 45 days or so, that's a cushion.
Yep, do we have to include that potential, that designation date in our resolution, or we could just authorize him to designate a date?
I think it's fine the way it's written.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And I want to point out, too, just in terms of the content of the draft that you have, you do have in the binder that I had previously distributed to you, a guidebook that was published by the Department of Housing and the Regional Plan Association, and it has recommended content in it for the content of the municipal affordable housing plans. What's been provided does not exactly follow that recommended content. So, that's something else we're going to be considering in terms of revisions, to make it more in compliance with what was recommended by the department and the association. Do you have any further questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can I ask either Bill or Sally to read the resolution?
Well, I'll, I'll read eight and the resolution. I think they both have to be read, right? So, number eight is what we've just done, I think. But, to consider and act upon a resolution authorizing First Electman Michael J. Frieda as the chief elected official of the town of North Haven to submit a letter to the Office of Policy and Management of the State of Connecticut detailing why an affordable housing plan will not be submitted for the town of North Haven to set office by June 1, 2022, in accordance with Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-30-J, and designating a date by which an affordable housing plan will be submitted, as recommended by the Affordable Housing Plan Advisory Committee. And so, based on the presentation we just heard from counsel, I will move the following resolution. Resolved that First Electman Michael J. Frieda, as the chief elected official of the town of North Haven, is hereby authorized to submit a letter to the Office of Policy and Management of the State of Connecticut detailing why an affordable housing plan will not be submitted for the town of North Haven to set office by June 1, 2022, in accordance with Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-30-J, and designating a date by which an affordable housing plan will be submitted, as recommended by the housing, excuse me, by the Affordable Housing Plan Advisory Committee. So, I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item.
Number nine, to consider and act upon a fair housing resolution for the town of North Haven. Fair housing resolution, town of North Haven, whereas all persons are afforded a right to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice, and federal fair housing laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, or national origin, be given equal access to all housing-related opportunities, including rental and home ownership opportunities, and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing locations. And Connecticut fair housing laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, marital status, age, lawful source of income, familial status, learning disability, physical or mental disability, sexual orientation, be given equal access to all housing-related opportunities, including rental and home oppor, home ownership opportunities, and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing location. And the town, and the town of North Haven is committed to upholding these laws, and realize that these laws must be supplemented by an affirmative statement publicly endorsing the right of all people to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town of North Haven hereby endorses a fair housing policy to ensure equal opportunity for all persons to rent, purchase, obtain financing, enjoy all other housing-related services of their choice on a non-discriminatory basis as provided by state and federal law. And be it further resolved that the chief executive officer of the town of North Haven, or his designated representative, is responsible for responding to and assisting any person who alleges to be the victim of an illegal discriminatory housing practice in the town of North Haven, and for advising such person of the right to file a complaint with the State of Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities, CHRO, or the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, or HUD, or to seek assistance with the Connecticut Fair Housing Center Legal Services, or other fair housing organization, to protect his or her right to equal housing opportunities.
So.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to, to, to do that.
All right, motion and a second.
Yes, I will second that. I think we, we do this every year, I believe.
Every year.
And it's a good thing that we, for us to do this, to endorse this fair housing initiative. So, I will happily second Mr. Piper's resolution.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I will do number 10.
Okay.
Okay. To consider and act upon a resolution designating April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in North Haven. Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas, child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone, and our children are our most valuable resources, and we will shape the future. And child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. So, now, therefore, be it resolved that the governing board of the town of North Haven declares April National Child Abuse Prevention Month in North Haven, and urges all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. So, I will make the motion that, for that resolution.
All right, thank you, we have a motion.
I, of course, will second that very good motion and resolution.
Absolutely. So, we have a motion and a second. And seeing no further discussion, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, next item.
Item number 11 on the agenda is a call for the annual Budget Town Meeting to be held on Monday, May 9, 2022. at seven PM in the auditorium of the North Haven High School, two twenty-one Elm Street, North Haven, Connecticut, to conduct the following business. Uh, one, to consider and act upon the recommendation of the Board of Finance to take action regarding the budget for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-two, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Number two, to establish the due date and number of installments for the payment of property taxes, real estate, personal property, motor vehicle, and supplemental motor vehicle, in accordance with Sections twelve dash one forty-two and twelve dash one forty-four A of the Connecticut General Statutes. And three, pursuant to Section seven-seven of the Connecticut General Statutes, to adjourn, adjourn such a said town meeting at its conclusion, and to submit the question concerning the adoption of a budget for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-two, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, to vote by paper ballot on Tuesday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, including the establishment of the exact hours of voting at referendum pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section seven dash nine B, that voting will take place between the hours of six AM and eight PM at the following North Haven polling place. All districts, Milford, I'm sorry, Mildred, Wakely, Recreation Center, Seven Linsley Street. The fore-said, uh, for said recommendations will be placed on paper ballots at the following, as the following question. Shall the town of North Haven, in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Finance, approve and adopt a budget consisting of sixty million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty, three hundred and thirty dollars for the Board of Education, and fifty-five million, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the town government, for a total amount of a hundred and sixteen million, twenty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-two, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three? Voters approving said question will vote yes, and those opposing said question will vote no.
Okay. Motion to accept.
Well, this is a, a, a call. Not, we're not voting on the budget. We're voting for the call of the town meeting. I have a, a question about this. Normally, you know, I look back the past five or six years. We have a special Board of Selectmen meeting around the third week of April, and that's where we do the call. It's usually after the April Board of Finance meeting, which this year is April twentieth. Now, I realize we could still do another call.
We may have to.
Yeah.
And this, we, this.
So I'm surprised to see it here, because it's not usually on the first week of April Board of Selectmen agenda.
Well, historically, it always was. And then.
Not, not the past five or six years it hasn't been. Yeah. Okay.
No, it was. And then in two thousand nineteen, we had an instance where the call, the budget that was voted on changed at the Board of Finance. So we did have to hold a special meeting and recall the notice. And I did remember checking with Attorney DiNofrio at that time, and he said that we needed to put the whole call in, but then if the, um, Board of Finance kept the budget the way it is, then we're fine.
Yeah.
If it changes, then we call a simple special meeting and just do it then.
Okay.
So this just eliminate, this, so there's a chance that we may not need that meeting by doing it today, since we're already meeting here today. If it changes, then we'll call a special meeting. If it doesn't, then we're all set.
Yeah, we had special meetings seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Uh, twenty and twenty-one were kind of different because of the, um, pandemic. First of all, in twenty, there was no referendum. The Board of Finance voted on the budget themselves.
Even further back, we didn't put the notes in. And it was always done in April at the official meeting. And it was two thousand, I, I think I looked back when Attorney DiNofrio said that we need to start including it.
Right. Because, but I just want to make it clear. There was, there was actually a slide in your presentation the other night at the public hearing that, um, the next step in the budgetary process is the April twentieth meeting, which, where changes could, could be made. Uh, you know, otherwise, you know, to, to not have that option, you know, wh- wh- this is, these are the exact same numbers that the, uh, Board of Finance approved on March fifteenth to be presented to the public hearing. So it, you know, it, it could, could change. Otherwise, you're not really giving the, do respect to the, purpose of the public hearing, which is to help the Board of Finance members, uh, make decisions. So it could change. Yeah.
It could change. And if it does, then we'll call a special meeting. It'll be very simple, and we'll just.
Yeah, we get together, we change it. Okay. I just wanted to, you know, that, that, that's still a possibility.
Yes.
Um, and, and we have done that.
Yes.
Quite a few times in recent years. Okay. So, um, I'll make a motion to, uh, call the annual Budget Town Meeting on Monday, May ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion, second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item.
I'll make a motion to approve the property tax refunds reflected in the, um, agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second, um, those, uh, property tax refunds.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none. We're going to call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Item number thirteen, the next regular meeting of this board will be Thursday, May fifth, here at six-thirty, upstairs in the conference room. We're at the point on public comment. I'd like to first invite Mrs. Sally Fowler, who's here with her husband, Raymond Fowler. Sally and Raymond, welcome. Sally, the floor is yours.
When my husband and I started our program eleven years ago, we had a motto, "No Excuse for Child Abuse." You see it on the bags. This year, we have a new motto. In addition to "No Excuse for Child Abuse," we have "Don't Be a What-if Person." Now, what is a what-if person? A what-if person is someone who sees something. And for whatever reason, maybe they've made a policy never to say anything about anything. Or maybe they were scared. Or maybe they thought, "Well, it's not a, not really any of my business." That's a what-if person. Then they find out that something happened. And they wonder, "What if I had said something sooner? Would the outcome have been different?" Now, like you and I, I thought the cases of child abuse would go down during the pandemic, between twenty twenty and February of twenty-two. That, you know, kids were in school. Um, they weren't participating in sports. They weren't really out of the house. But statistics have come out that say that between that period, the, the amount of child abuse rose by three hundred percent across the United States. That's three zero zero percent. At a time when parents, guardians, caregivers, relatives should be nursed, nurturing their children, they were instead abusing them. Now, before I go any further, I'd like to introduce you to a picture of Mary Beth Wilson. Whoops. Now, don't, of those of you on, on national, um, I'm sorry, on N-H-D-V, don't adjust your settings. And for those of you who are here, don't think I'm crazy. She fades in and out. Mary Beth Wilson, when that picture was taken, was five years old. Now, picture this. Brown hair, brown eyes, smattering of freckles, cute as a button. On the day it was, this picture was taken, it was a hot June day. Remember that. This was a little kid who loved school. She loved reading and being read to. She loved playing on the swings. She was grabbing life with both hands. In February of that school year, the teachers noticed that she stopped raising her hand in class. And they wondered, gee, you know, maybe it's a fad or something. Maybe she doesn't do it because a lot of her other classmates do it. Skip ahead to that June day. The little girls in her class were all wearing sundresses. It was that hot. The boys were wearing short-sleeved, button-down shirts. Mary Beth was wearing a plaid dress with a Peter Pan collar and long sleeves. Now, the teachers commented, like teachers do, and wondered, "Why was she wearing long sleeves?" And they thought, "Well, maybe it was her favorite dress." Or maybe she was going out with her family after school. But they didn't say anything. Summer comes and summer goes. And school rolls around the next couple of days. And Mary Beth doesn't show up. So they do a welfare check. Well, Mary Beth won't be returning to school. It turns out that a relative of hers was using her arms as an ashtray. And one day, he went a little too far. Now, it's interesting to note that Mary Beth Wilson had an ancestor, also known Mary, only she was Mary Ellen Wilson. She lived in the eighteen-seventies in New York State with, in a foster home, where her foster mother was abusing her every single day. When it came to the attention of the authorities, they obviously took Mary Ellen out of the house. And when it came up in front of the judge, the judge put her in jail for a year, the foster mother. Now, you might think that a year to us is nothing. But back in the eighteen-seventies, there were no prisons for women. Well, she got out of the house anyway. That was a good thing. But the attorneys and the citizens of the town she was living in said, "There has to be something we should do. We can't just let this one incident die. There's got to be something else going on." So they decided that they would form a committee and look into it. And they formed a society, which is the first known society or group to address child abuse in the United States in eighteen seventy-four. The name of this organization was the New York Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Children. Now, if that sounds familiar, it's because they based it on the prevention of cruelty to animals. And that's how child abuse came into America. Now, my challenge to you all is not to be a what-if person. Now, since we've been doing this program here in North Haven, a lot of people have come and asked us, "What is child abuse really? I mean, is it just physical?" Of course not. It's phys- it's physical, yes, but it's also emotional, psychological, sexual. It's bullying of all kinds, internet or face-to-face. Now, bullying is not if a mother gets upset that her child is not following her in the store. A mother can get impatient. We know that. We all can get impatient. It's not taking away video games, or TV, or the internet, or whatever, for a kid for a week because they did something wrong. It's locking up the child in a room, only allowing them out for bathroom breaks and school. It's slapping, hitting, et cetera. That's child abuse. Now, if you see something, you know, next door to your, in your home, in your, in your, um, neighborhood, in your home, in a relative's home, in anywhere in North Haven, and you say, "I don't know if that's child abuse." You can call an eight-hundred number. Luckily, it's anonymous. And it's eight-hundred, eight-four-two, two-two-eight-eight. They answer that line twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days. All calls get put into a database, becomes a case file, and every case is investigated, every single one. Now, if you, if you, you know, say something and you say, "Well, I'm not sure," they write it down anyway, and they investigate it. Don't be a what-if person, please. If you see something, say something. Stand up for children, please. Because there's no excuse for child abuse. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sally. Raymond, would you like the microphone brought to you to say a few words, or no?
I just want to say, um, everybody knows I'm kind of on my last legs. And, uh, I was a little bit, uh, concerned that the program would die with me. I cannot tell you how proud I am of my wife. And I, it's amazing what she did. Honey, I'm proud of you. I love you, and thank you. And thank all of North Haven for supporting our program. There's no excuse for child abuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you very much, Sally, also. Okay. Would, would, would anyone else like to have public comment? Sherman Katz.
Sherman Katz, Forty Sherwood Drive. You might want to put that phone number in the bag next time. I just have about forty comments to make, but I'm going to eliminate most of them. Mike, your background in business tells you that you always have to have backups for your important people. Who's your backup? Who's Mike Frida's backup? In case, God forbid, something happens to Mike, and he is unable for some reason to perform his duties, who is your backup?
Sherman Katz. That's who I want.
You put, you put too many hats on, Mike. I was gonna, I have something in the car. I was going to bring it up to you. It's a red cape. You put it on your back, and it was a big S on the front.
But Sherman, you have to understand, I appreciate you saying that, but we get pushed back. We're trying to add positions. This young lady here, she's, you heard her the other night, adding too many positions. I have to do it. I have to do all these things. Because I can't, I can't add anybody until this budget passes. So I have to wait until the fiscal year. So I'm doing it. I'm getting it done. On top of a hundred phone calls a day, a hundred emails a day, Facebook messages being texted even as I'm sitting here tonight. So I'm getting it done. But hopefully, help will be on the way, Sherman.
Well, in, in your vernacular, you stepped up to the plate.
That's right. I'm up there.
But hopefully, we'll have some backup for you in the next fiscal year. And the Finance Department, uh, I don't know, but, uh, economic development is probably impossible anyhow.
Uh, Mr. Katz, before you go on, I've said at the public hearing that I fully supported the two new positions in the Finance Office, the Controller, CPA, and the Director of Administration and Purchasing. I also support the, um, Manager of Community Services. So I, I think that those three positions would help alleviate a lot of Mr. Frida's new, new duties that he has taken on since the very sad passing of Mr. Swankowski. I did, I did, uh, voice objection to some of the public safety positions for two reasons. Lack of data, for one, maybe we should wait a little bit till we have more data, and to space it out a little bit, waiting for economic development. But as far as helping him with his positions, fully supportive of the engineer, also the new engineer, the new laborer, the new, um, uh, collector, fully supported all of those, those positions.
We have to stretch him and make his job easier.
So, the, but the, the three main ones that, that would help him, uh, I believe, uh, I am, fully supported, uh, fully support and said that clearly at the public, uh, meeting, which you, public hearing, which you were there and heard me say that. Sorry to interrupt your comment. Go ahead.
Uh, just a quickie. I saw in a newspaper today that the Guilford Police Department had about a half a dozen cars that were not locked, keys left in them, wallets left in them. And, uh, they're not immune to these people that come up to the cars and just, if it's unlocked, they get in. If it's locked, they pass it by and go somewhere else.
Police cars were broken into?
Police cars.
That's bad public relations.
One car was stolen, and one policeman had his wallet. He had it on the seat in the car.
Well, I think our police department does an excellent job encouraging people to lock their cars, and I hope they don't.
I want to bring-
That's a good point.
But that's a great point Sherman makes. That is what is going on in today's society. The emboldened, the brazenness of some of these criminals. And that's why I want to add more police officers and increase public safety. Because, folks, it's not getting better. Again, I was at a statewide mayor's meeting today. Suburbs, urban areas, everybody's affected by it. One town manager told me today, "One juvenile stole three cars in the same day, laughed at the cops, laughed at him. You can't do anything to me." They had to release him, and he stole another car. Same thing happened a second time. Stole a third car in the afternoon, Sherman.
We've had people murdered by people who were released from prisons. Just a quick note. The discussion last, last selectman meeting about motor vehicle taxes, and in spite of what everyone said, I don't want to quote Governor Lamont because he was talking about taking on all the motor vehicle taxes for the state of Connecticut. And in his talk, he said, "If the car is housed in the town for 180 days a year, it must be taxed in that town." Now, that's a law. And if you don't do it, you're breaking the law. If you don't enforce the law, you're breaking the law. So, no, we should be going after these people. Students, it makes no difference. There was a town, there was a small town where had a school, and the students were residents because they were there more than six or eight months of the year. They voted the mayor out, put one of their students in there as a mayor. So enough said about that. The SRO at the high school, I don't know if you people remember, the Board of Education was supposed to reimburse the police department for 50% of its pay. That would be, that was, at that time, it was $50,000. I don't, I don't know if they're still doing it, or if they forgot to do it. But will they, will the Board of Education contribute 50% of the new person's pay? You don't know.
I'm not sure. I think, I think-
The supernumerary is a line item in the police department budget.
I'm just curious about this.
I think, Sherman, we changed that when we put the supernumeraries in, but I can check.
And the note about paving. It's very important to keep our roads in good condition for several reasons. Number one, you attract people to buy houses on good streets. If the street is no good, they don't want to buy a house. Then you have businesses that come into town. If you can't have cars conveniently going to their businesses, they don't want to come here. There's so many things involved in the streets being in good condition. And we have, what, how many, 100 and some odd miles a street in this city?
194.
194. If you stop for one year, it's going to take you four years to catch up again. So it's a never-ending battle. You have to keep fighting it. All right, so much for that stuff. The, I had hoped that, and I watched some of the budget workshops. I had hoped that the Board of Finance would have scrutinized some of the requests a little bit more carefully. Nancy Barrett came up with a suggestion for a bunch of changes and reductions and so on. I don't agree with all of them, but I think some of them were applicable. And I just don't think you guys, I'm sorry. I just don't think the Board of Finance was as diligent as they should be. And the one, one of the things I really objected to, when Mr. Monaco insisted we have a .47 mil increase, his reasoning was, I can almost quote this, "The people couldn't afford $10, $15 a month more." Well, he didn't consider automobile taxes, which could be another $5 a month. But more than that, I don't think he should look into my pocket. That's not his job. It's what I can afford. It's what the town can afford. What can, what can you do for a budget? You can pass any kind of budget you want, ridiculous or good. I won't say anything more about that. The other thing that came up was people speeding in North Haven. Washington Avenue, it's a good straight run, 50, 60 miles an hour, very frequently. People take a left on red. Happened to me today. Guy in front of me took a left on a red. People take a right on red when there's a big sign that says "No right on red", they roll through the stoplights, they roll through the stop signs. I spoke to someone in the town of authority, and I was told that the police sometimes don't want to be accused of profiling. So they sort of ignore some of these things. Well, it doesn't do good to ignore it. I mean, I almost had several accidents. I've seen some near misses. When I first moved into this town, and for many years, if you so much as roll through a stop sign, you got 20 feet and the cop pulled you over. That's not happening now.
Oh, it's not. You're right, Sherman. There's reasons.
And I think the police department has to be told to do it. We had a month, we have a month where they get money from the government to do, for texting. I remember a few years ago, when we, when this month of April came about, and Joe Derico asked the chief, "How many tickets did you issue during that month?" "Three." "I see three people every 15 minutes." And you've got a lot, you've got the unmarked cars out there. You can, you can catch them. So I had a young lady next to me on I-91 yesterday, doing 65 miles an hour with her phone up like this, texting. It's scary. I think I'm very close. Oh, yeah. Read the article in the paper today about that town we're not going to mention, whose financial straits with the state is taking it over. And I follow it a little bit. And some of that I attribute to the mayor. I shouldn't say to the mayor. I attribute that to some people up in the administration that are not watching what's going on in their own backyard. As the Chief Executive Officer of North Haven, everything that happens in this town is your fault. Or to your credit. So, you know, you really have to watch what you got. Very easy to get, it's not the only town. Waterbury had it a few years ago. They even hired an ex-con to run their budget, to run their money. Enough said about that. And that's, that's all I'm going to say tonight. Thank you for your attention.
You're welcome.
Okay. Tom White.
Good evening, Tom White Summerling. Again, I'd like to continue to laud you, Mike, on your performance as an outstanding financial manager for the town for several years. Now, you navigated us through a pandemic when many other municipalities were struggling. So that says a lot, because things got pretty bad. So I thank you for that. I think it's a ridiculous philosophy for a rating agency to employ that you're mandating that you have to have a tax increase, because I think there are plenty other instances where a tax increase cannot be avoided for the sake of some kind of safeguards or anything that has to be done in a municipality. So be that as it is, I trust that you're going to navigate us through this. The reason why I'm here this evening is I wanted to bring to the attention of the board so as not to have the information possibly get diluted in any fashion. And members of the public, our most recent Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, where my wife and I, we were disheartened to learn from the PCC that they were reluctant, were reluctant, initially reluctant to allow us to speak regarding cannabis establishments in the town of North Haven. I find it ironic that I'm here this evening on Child Abuse Awareness Month, because many of the highlights we had with that presentation are directly relevant to child, you know, safety. So here's my narrative. We were very concerned about the PCC ignoring the public health and safety hazards of cannabis. Science of a dozen studies of data presented proved those hazards. The many studies and reviews revealed how cannabis use impairs several areas of cognition, including problems concentrating and difficulties remembering and learning, which may have considerable impact on users' daily lives, such as reduced educational attainment for adolescents and in adults, poor work performance, and impaired dangerous driving. How THC, the main psychoactive compound in cannabis, has a negative impact on the brain's higher levels of thinking. Those executive functions include the ability to make decisions, remember important data, plan, organize, and solve problems, as well as control emotions and behaviors. How cannabinoids impair all stages of memory, including encoding, consolidation, and retrieval. How states that have legalized medical and recreational marijuana have an increase in cannabis use disorder and have an increase in dabbing and/or vaping weed use. How the vapor produced by butane hash oil, a cannabis extract, has three to five times more THC than the plant itself. And how dabbing, a form of vaporization, produces toxins like benzene, a known carcinogen. How one in three grade 12 students reported vaping weed, their preferred method of getting their THC high. How teens are suffering from a deadly lung disease called EVALE due to vaping weed. How the teen brain is not fully developed until the age of 25. How one or two joints causes brain damage in teens. And how one in six teens who use weed regularly become addicted. Our wonderful town attorney is going to be charged with drafting the framework to allow cannabis dispensaries in commercial zones. And I want to make the public aware, I'm sure they already are aware, many of them, that many of these zones are adjacent to residential neighborhoods. So this, this could pose a problem. We would like it, if it has to be anywhere here, to be as far away from residential zones as possible. And me personally, as well as my wife, we'd like it as far away from children as possible. Mrs. Lee Fermo actually gave testimony in the hearing as to that, and she's a nurse. So the next meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, where they plan to move this forward, is May 2nd at 7:00 a.m. by Zoom, where you can stop by the meeting and voice your concerns. As I said in that meeting, my three and a half years, my 30 and a half, my three and a half decades of law enforcement experience, the last three and a half at the hospital and security, I've seen more people present themselves in the hospital setting with issues, you know, and serious medical conditions, more than I care to mention. It's increased. So I've, I've done the work, done the research. And as I said in the meeting with the PCC, it's not based on my opinion. It's based on experience. And when I put something together, it's about foresight. It's about how anything we do today would play out in the future. So we're just trying to prevent that kind of industry from jeopardizing our health and safety, you know, here in North Haven. And that's essentially what we were trying to do. The fact, it was brought, brought to my face that, well, it's legal in the state of Connecticut. That, that doesn't really mean anything to me. It's legal, but it's not mandatory in the town of North Haven. So we don't have to have it. And it's not legal federally yet, so.
That's right.
So anyway, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I was asked to draft a regulation to permit medicinal marijuana dispensary. So I want to make that clarification. And then the meeting is at 7:00 p.m., not 7:00 a.m. That's okay, Mr. White. It is late. And the Planning and Zoning is taking up a lot of important issues right now. There's also going to be a public hearing on May 2nd regarding the opt-out legislation. I just bring this up because it's something that you, as a board, will have to act on as well pursuant to Public Act 21-29. They're going to be holding a public hearing on accessory apartments, accessory dwelling units as well on May 2nd. And the parking provision that is in that legislation as well. So they do desire to opt out of the accessory apartment and parking provisions. So it will be coming to you if that, that decision is made after the public hearing, if they do vote to opt out. Because there are two levels of decision-making in the legislation that are required, as I think I informed you previously last year. Thank you.
That won't be, excuse me, that will be part of the, or will be part of the Affordable Housing Plan.
No, it's separate. It's, yes, it's completely separate. It will not be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comment? All right, well, I think we're at the point for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved?
Motion, second? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for being here. Thanks for watching.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.